Cheat sheets there?
I have them, and...
And then you'll have to make a decision, or if you want to ask the board for a vote about reorganizing the... the... reordering the agenda items.
I think I'll poll the board on that. All right, let's get... let's get started. Welcome, everyone, to the February 9, 2021 meeting of the Goffstown Zoning Board of Adjustment. Going to read the Rules of the Road for tonight. As Chairman of the Goffstown Zoning Board, due to the COVID-19 outbreak and in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are, A, providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. The ZBA is utilizing a telephone conference line for this electronic meeting. The public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following number: and using the participant code 785645, followed by the pound sign. Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, the town previously gave notice to the public of how to access this meeting using the available telephone number with the posted agenda. We provided a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem with telephone access, please call (603) 660-5000. The meeting will be adjourned if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn and have it rescheduled at that time. All votes taken during this meeting will be done by roll call vote. When each member states their presence, those connected telephonically are also asked to please state whether there is anyone in the room with them during the meeting, which is required under the state right-to-know law. With the members of the board, we have only two people here tonight: Nancy Larson, the zoning enforcement officer, and myself, Leonard Stewart, the vice chairman. The other members of the board are participating remotely by telephone. I will ask the... everyone to introduce themselves, starting with Nancy Larson. And please state whether anyone is in the room with you. Nancy?
Nancy Larson, zoning code enforcement officer. And I just need to unmute some folks here. Bear with me, everyone. Okay.
All right, Alan, are you there?
Alan, I'm here. I'm in the role alone.
Denise?
Denise Langley, member, I'm alone.
Sandra?
Sandra Parker, and I'm alone.
Jason Cody?
Jason Cody, alternate member, and I'm alone.
And Gail LeBrack, who is our chairman.
Gail LeBrack, chairman, and I am all alone. But Len is acting chairman tonight since I can't attend in person.
All right, thank you all very much. Continuing with our required notices, the Goffstown Zoning Board is an elected board of five members and up to five appointed alternates. Currently, the board has five elected members and no al... and one alternate. If anyone is interested in serving on the ZBA, please see zoning enforcement officer Nancy Larson for information. The board has a posted agenda for each meeting and tends to follow the items in order. The board will open the public hearing on an application to receive testimony from applicants, abutters, and affected parties, and ask questions about the appeal. The public hearing will then be closed, and the board will enter into deliberation to discuss the merits of the appeal. For each application, the board will decide to approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a later meeting. You are welcome to watch the deliberations this evening, or you can contact Nancy Larson at Town Hall for results. For an applicant's request to be approved, there must be an affirmative vote of at least three members. An applicant can request a continuance if there is not a full five-member board to act on an application. If you are aggrieved by the decision made by the ZBA tonight, you have the right to appeal to Superior Court. However, before appealing to the Superior Court, you must request a rehearing with this board to preserve your right to appeal. Rehearing requests must be filed within 30 days of the decision and state all reasons why the decision was unlawful or unreasonable. Failure to request a rehearing may forfeit your ability to appeal to the Superior Court. And with that, I'm just going to take an informal poll of the board. You've probably heard the discussion offline that we have timing things. Attorney Cronin, on behalf of HEMLE, has requested to be moved down in the agenda because he's caught in another eating. And I'm not sure whether we have the second applicant, Tanya Goslin, on the line yet. Mr. Tierney, on behalf of Mr. Coughlin's project, is prepared to go first. If there are no objections from the board, we'll take it in that order and go back to the top of the agenda.
Len, I don't mind it going in that order, but should we approve the minutes first?
Okay, I just wanted to... I wanted to get that in. If anyone else has any objections, speak now. Okay, the... we have the minutes here of the meeting of January 5, 2021, which was a very brief meeting. Do I have a motion?
Hey, Len, this is Jason. There's just an addition.
Okay.
The... the beginning doesn't indicate that I was in attendance on... through telephone, and I was.
All right.
As well as this is Denise. I was also in attendance.
All right, any other additions or corrections?
I motion to approve the minute as noted. This is Denise.
Okay, do I have a second? All right, I... I will second.
I'll second.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Gail. I'll cede to you on that. All right, I'm going to go down the list. All our votes are by roll call. Gail LeBrack?
Yes.
Alan Eaton? Alan?
Alan, can you hear Len?
Yes.
Okay, that's a yes vote on the minutes. Thank you. Denise?
Yeah.
Sandra?
Here.
That's... I'm looking for a vote, yea or nay, on acceptance of the minutes.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, acceptance of the minutes.
All right. Thank you. That does it on the minutes. All right, with that, if anyone is proceed... prepared to proceed in the order that I outlined, Mr.... Mr. Tierney, you are... would you please give your presentation?
Yes, thank you. Michael Tierney, I'm here on behalf of the Woodland Trust, who is the applicant, and is asking the board for an extension of the special exception that was initially granted for multifamily housing in the Residential One District. This is going to be a two-phase project. It's been approved by the planning board. We have requisite extensions from the planning board, as well as all the state permits. But our special exception is expiring a little more than a month from now, I believe it is. One of the things that had been holding us up on moving forward with this project until now was getting the financing to actually complete the project. And so I can tell the board that in December of 2020, we got the financing approval. So now all needs to be done is the closing to Dakota Partners and then put some shovels in the ground. And just so that the... the board clearly understands, it's the intent that Phase One will get started this year and that Phase Two would then come after that.
All right, any... anything further, sir?
And I have Representative from Dakota Partners also on the telephone here. People had particular questions about the specifics of the project.
All right. Let me back up for a moment, if I may. I made an error in not reading in full the notice of hearing before we got into your presentation. So if you'll bear with me, I'm just going to read the legal notice. And then I do have a couple of questions in regard to it. On this application, James E.M. Coughlin, Jr., trustee of Woodland Trust, applicant and Placid Woods owner, seeking a time extension for a special exception initially granted on February 2, 2010 to allow multifamily housing on a lot in a Residential One District. The project consists of subdividing the existing 68.23-acre lot into two lots and constructing 76 attached townhome-style units in multiple buildings on a 37.11-acre lot with frontage on Bog Road. Section 3 dot 11A... dot A... dot 3 of the zoning ordinance, Table of Principal Uses, lists multifamily as a use permitted by special exception. The property is located off Mountain Road and Bog Road, Map 4, Lot 87-6, in a Residential One District. Special exceptions expire two years after the date of approval if active... if active and substantial development has not been accomplished. A previous time extension was approved in March of 2019 and is scheduled to expire. Thank you for your patience. Any other members?
Excuse me, this is Denise. This is Denise. I'd like to just motion that there is... I lost my mind, I'm sorry.
No regional impact.
No regional impact.
Do I have a second?
Second by Alan.
Any discussion? Let's... let's go down the roll again, please. Gail LeBrack? Alan?
Yes.
Denise?
Yeah.
Sandra?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. 5-0 for no regional impact. All right, we have heard Mr. Tierney's presentation. Is there anything... who did you... what was the name of the representative with you, Mr. Tierney?
Eric Kuzarski with Dakota Partners.
Could you spell that, please?
Sure. Hold on a second, I'm sorry.
Michael, I can spell that if you'd like. Good evening, it's Eric Kuzarski with Dakota Partners. Last name is K-U-C-Z-A-R-S-K-I.
Can you spell that... say that again, please?
Sure. Eric with a C. Kuzarski. Development Director with Dakota Partners.
Okay, do we have any questions from members of the board?
I have a question. Not... not so much of the applicant, but of Nancy.
Yes, Gail.
Has anything... has anything in the zoning ordinance changed since the last time we granted an extension? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, Len, this is Jason. I have a question for Nancy, too.
All right, go ahead.
The... has... if I'm... if I recall this right, the master plan has changed since then, correct?
Uh, the ma... the master plan is going through an update now. It hasn't... the master plan update hasn't been adopted yet.
Okay, I only asked because in the packet for the other one, it indicated that in the minute that there wasn't a master plan.
Yeah, there... there... there is... there is not, as far as I am aware. The... the Regional Planning Commission is... is driving that update. And I know the planning board had several meetings with... with the Regional Planning Commission. But to the best of my knowledge, it has not yet been adopted by the planning board. And I would be surprised if it had been already because they were really at the... at the beginning phases just a couple of months ago.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the board?
Actually, I'm sorry, I have one more. Has there been a... has there been any new changes? Or was one of the last traffic assessment was done for this? I'm sorry, I wrote...
Uh, I don't... I don't have that information in front of me, but I can tell you that it went before the planning board. Mr. Coughlin went before the planning board for an extension of time last year. And I have it in my... my staff report, so just bear with me here. And the traffic study is... is something that they would have discussed. And if there was any need for any tweaking or updating, then that would have been part of their process. And...
Okay.
So the planning board, at their meeting held on August 13, 2020, they voted that there was no regional impact, accepted the application as complete, and voted to grant a one-year time extension.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anyone else from the board?
Yes, it's Alan here.
Go ahead, Alan.
I noticed in reading the application, are they looking for an extension for a year or two years or just until the August 10th, coinciding with the planning board?
I believe it's requested six months.
I thought I read that somewhere. Six months.
Mr. Tierney, are you able to answer that?
Yes, that is correct. The request was for six months. We should be getting active and substantial construction on Phase One within six months.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and that... that, Mr. Tierney, was also my question for you. We've been through so many extensions on this project. This is the year that we actually really get work done on it. We were told in 2019 that work was set to begin that year. I would be disinclined for any further extensions beyond this if work doesn't begin. Are you really ready to go this time?
Yes.
I'm wondering if we shouldn't... I know they're asking for six months. What if we go for a year just to give a little bit of leeway there? Because in construction, things always go wrong.
This is Denise, Gail, and I... I agree with that. That anything can happen in this day, Denise. So I think giving them a year is a wise decision.
They can probably start digging, maybe, with the equipment. But I've heard all along how hard lumber is to get and that type of thing, so... you know.
They'll be devastated at that point if they do site work.
Yeah, that's true. But I'm... if they're up for it, I would say we go for a year.
Okay, well, we're not deliberating yet. And we do have a member of the public here in the room who wishes to speak on the application. So is there anything further for Mr. Tierney?
Nothing further.
Board members?
No, no questions on my part.
All right, I'm now going to...
Alan, I'll hold tight.
All right. I'm now going to open the hearing to members of the public. We do have a member of the public here who wishes to speak on it. If you'd come on up to the table and please state your name and your interest.
Thank you. Good evening. Can you hear me okay? Okay, great. My name is Catherine Perez-Caza. My husband and I have been residents of Goffstown for over 30 years, and we're direct abutters to this parcel. I'd like to begin by saying that I have very serious concerns about this development and specifically about this application for an extension. The application itself is unclear about who actually owns this parcel and who is responsible... who has the legal right to even submit this application for extension. The tax card on this parcel, um, as listed in the public records on Vision Government System, says that the owner is Placid Woods. The application here, in the informational section, says that the owner is Placid Woods, care of John Munson. However, the document itself is signed by the owner of John Munson, and he identifies himself on page nine as acting as partner for Placid Wood Associates. That is a different entity. So this application is submitted as a different entity that is not the same as the actual owner as represented on the tax card in our town. So I am concerned about that. Furthermore, I went to the deed, and the deed for this exact parcel is listed as the owner being Placid Woods Three. So we have three entities in play here. Placid Woods, Placid Woods Associates, and Placid Woods Three. Now, none of them line up with each other. So for the board to take any decision, or even frankly have any deliberation about this, would be out of order, um, and, uh, would be incorrect. So I, I respectfully request for the town's benefit, and the applicant's benefit, and the abutters' benefit, that we continue this meeting until this application can be put in order to the correct applicant. Because right now, it is not correct. They conflict, frankly, they conflict with each other. The person who signed this as the owner is representing a company called Placid Woods Associates, which is not the same as Placid Woods. And if you decide to go further with this meeting, I have additional comments, and I'd like to reserve those for that time.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Board members, any questions for Ms. Preskaza?
Let me just unmute everybody. There was a lot of background noise, so I, I just muted everyone, so bear with me, folks.
This is Denise.
Okay, that's everybody, go ahead.
Maybe we can let the applicant comment on that?
Sure. Um, so Michael Tierney here. Um, the applicant is, um, the Woodland Trust together with Placid Woods. Uh, Mr. Munson's authorization for us to go forward is included, um, in the application. Um, whether Mr. Munson had signed, uh, Placid Woods this or Placid Woods that, um, makes no difference, this is the same, uh, Placid Woods that is the owner, um, and has, um, you know, been applying these several years for the permits for this, um, development. This is not, um, anything different than the same, uh, Placid Woods, been the case all along.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from the board?
Hey Lynn, this is Jason.
Go ahead, Jason.
The, uh, the, uh, person from the public here, I thought I heard her say that she had more information. Uh, my, my question for you is, once we close this, she wouldn't have the opportunity to bring that up again, right?
I wasn't, I wasn't going to close it, I was going to ask her for her additional comments when we went around the board again.
Awesome. Thank, I just wanted to make sure she didn't, uh, she didn't, uh, get no chance to, to say any further. That's all, thank you.
Understood.
Thank you.
All right, with that, Ms. Preskaza?
Okay, um, so seeing that the board has, um, decided to move forward, um, I'd like to, um, talk about this request for an extension is a request for an extension of a special exception, as you know. A special exception is, um, something different than, than is permitted in the planning and zoning ordinances as a right. And the document has to, um, the application has to document why it's good for the community and why there won't be a negative, um, response to the, uh, the development on that particular parcel. And part of the conversation this evening was whether there has been any changes to the zoning ordinances. And the answer was, was, um, one-sided related to the zoning ordinances, but there has been changes to the land itself and to the parcel itself. Specifically as it relates to the tributary area of the wetlands that are a, a giant portion of this site. The tributary areas for this parcel come off of Mount on Canunic and come down through Lesnick Road, uh, Chuckerberry Lane, Evergreen Drive, and drain onto the bottom of this parcel. Along the north side, there's a continuous wetland, um, that is significant, and, um, it has been a topic of conversation. In the ten years, ten years since this original application was approved, um, there has been significant upland building on this, uh, tributary area for drainage. And, um, we have seen that culverts have had to be redone, and drainage lines have had to be redone, and trees have come down because of the saturation of water that has come along that tributary area. Now, um, the wetland study that was done, and the study of the tributary areas, is of the original vintage, ten years ago, before those houses were done, before those channels were cut and recut, and silt has, has come into play. There's a lot of changes that have happened in these ten years. It's significant, and it affects all of those neighbors that are in that neighborhood. And talking about the neighbors, um, part of the original groundwork of this presentation, this submittal, was that, that it would be in keeping and concert with the ne, with the neighbors, with the neighborhoods, and would, uh, not be detrimental. Well, this was originally presented to the planning board, the planning board, um, as a condominium development, a condominium. And it was talked about historically as being first-time homeowner, um, property, and that these were going to be condominiums, which were implied to be owner-occupied. Now, through these changes massaged through the years, um, what we have in front of us now is something very different than that. It's a rental, uh, development. And according to public record and public information, I was able to get a, a description of what this applicant is, is providing, is proposing for this. And phase one, as Attorney Tierney spoke, um, and I'm going to hand one of these to Nancy and to, and to Lynn up here too, so that you can see. Um, the project description, I want to read it into the record. The proposed development is the new construction of forty-two units of general occupancy rental housing located in Goffstown. This will be the first of two phases of the Woodland Village development, which will have seventy-four units overall when complete. Which, by the way, as a side note, is different than the seventy-six units that they have the application for. So these are not the same. Um, Woodland Village, the document continues, Woodland Village Phase One will consist of seven buildings with five one-bedroom units and thirty-seven two-bedroom units. The project will include five units reserved for households with income at or below, at or below thirty percent of the area median income, which is known as AMI. Thirty percent of AMI for a single person here in Goffstown, that is, according to the HUD rental assistance document, is, uh, that means that that person can have a maximum income of twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars. So this is, this is not just a residential project that was condominiums, it has changed to a low-income and ultra-low-income development, where the person who lives in a single unit can only make twenty-three thousand dollars and change. So that's five units. Six units are reserved for households with incomes at or below fifty percent of AMI, which is, according to the chart, thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. And twenty of the units are reserved for households with incomes at or below sixty percent of AMI. Eleven units, only eleven, will be market rate. Of the affordable units, six will be designated as home units, and four units will be set aside for individuals with severe mental illness under Section eight-one-one PRA program. The ta, the document goes on to say that town granted site plan approval in two thousand and nine. The planning board has extended the site plan approval multiple times. The current extension is valid until two thousand and twenty-one. The developer intends to obtain passive house certification. Okay. Now, let's go to the site plan approval. What the site plan approval was for is specifically, um, I'm reading from the minutes of September tenth, two thousand and nine. It is for applicant four, proposal to build ninety-two townhouse-style condominium units, totaling thirteen buildings on the newly-created eighty-seven dash six, Mountain Road, Bog, continued from August two thousand and nineteen. So that's ninety-two units of condominiums. And now we're at, now this proposal before us today is forty and then seventy-four total rental units at ultra-low income and mentally ill housing. This is a significant bait and switch in terms of all of the documentation that we have given as abutters to how this may affect our neighborhood and our municipal, um, uh, all of our municipal things. What will it take to support, um, this house and this, these housing units? And in addition to that, we have to look at it in the lens of, of what it was at the time. When it was approved, it was, it was condominiums. There were people who were not upset with, um, with homeownership and folks being able to get into their first house and have ownership, and, um, people coming from the community to, to build their houses and, you know, start their lives here. And they may have, they may have had other concerns as well, but they didn't voice them at the time because, because it was a different kind of a project. And in so, the development, um, on Lesnick Road and Chuckerberry Lane, there have been significant houses in the neighborhood of six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar valuation that have been built on land in that area, um, that may not have, um, they, that not, may not be in concert with, but definitely are not in concert with multifamily, um, such as this, rental units. And we're looking at it in, in terms of when it was originally submitted, and Attorney Tierney has said this is the same person that has, um, submitted it. Well, um, as a person, individual, I think that this is, um, a different kind of project than what was represented to us, to the, to the property owners, um, at the time when it was originally, um, approved. Now, the numbers don't match, the definition doesn't match, it should not be approved. It should not be this, this, um, this request for an extension should not be extended. And I asked for continuation at the very beginning, and the board denied that. And now, that's unfortunate because these, they had the chance to get their, their, um, documents in order, their numbers in order, and they're not the same. The land has changed, the wetlands have increased. I, I feel very strongly that this should not be extended.
One question for you, Kathy.
Yeah.
The source of your information on this is Dakota Partners' website, or where is that information from?
No, the source of this information is public information, and it is from, um, National, uh, New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority. They have public records of what the HUD money has been committed to, and this was sent to me directly from them. This, this was their document. It was a project overview that I read, and it was project overview of Woodland Village, Phase One, and they only have money to go through forty-two units, according to this document. This is what their, the pro, proposed development of new construction of forty-two units of general occupancy rental housing located in Goffstown. This will be the first of two phases of Woodland Village with seventy-four units overall when complete. So what they're asking for, seventy-four, what they're telling us, what New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority is, is telling that they're going to fund is seventy-four units. Which is different than what the applicant is presenting, that he's building.
Okay, thank you. Any, anything further before I go around? Questions from board members?
I don't have any questions.
Let me, let me go around, just checking. Gail, any questions?
No, I'm all set, Lynn, thank you.
Alan?
No questions.
Denise?
I'm all set right now, thank you.
Sandra?
I'm all set.
Jason?
No further questions for me, thank you.
I have but one. I, I am a bit concerned about the change in the description of the project, and I've been on this board long enough to have participated in the original approval of this, somewhat reluctantly, but there is no legal me, legal way to deny the fact that it has changed from a non, I'm concerned that it has changed from a condominium project to something which is substantially different. That being said, anything, anything further? And, uh, Mr. Tierney, would you like to respond to anything that you have heard?
Yes. Um, so first, um, is that going from a condominium project to being a rental unit project, um, that change happened, uh, some time ago, I was trying to find the exact date, but I want to say it was in the two thousand and sixteen timeframe, um, and that was a modification, um, that was fully disclosed to the boards at the time. What the request for the extension that you have in front of you today is an extension of the same, uh, project that the board approved in two thousand and nineteen. Um, there is apparently a typo to the extent, um, there was, uh, mention of seventy-six units. No, that is not, um, what the request is, it's for the same seventy-four units, um, that were approved in two thousand and nineteen, um, and that were approved, uh, by the planning board on August thirteenth, twenty twenty, uh, when they granted, um, you know, an extension to the planning board. Um, the abutters' concerns about the condominium, um, to rental have been made before, uh, most recently at the planning board. She also, I believe, raised concerns about the tributary area, um, you know, to the planning board back in twenty twenty. Um, and as, um, you know, I mentioned to the planning board in twenty twenty, as the planning board found, um, there's not any evidence that there's any, uh, changes, um, that would affect the approvals. Um, it was an issue that was raised at the time, it was an issue that's been raised, um, numerous times, um, uh, since, and all, um, that's being requested here is an extension of the same approvals that were granted in two thousand and nineteen.
All right, thank you.
This is Denise. Denise, I have a question.
Go ahead, Denise.
Going through the file, it looks like the AOT was received in 2016, so it's going to expire this spring if you don't get to work. So it's only five years old, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Hey Lynn, this is Jason. I did come up with one more question.
Go ahead.
The facts and circumstances section here, which is one, I think it's page, starting on page six of the packet that Nancy sent, is this from the original, or the original report in 2009?
Are you asking about my staff memo?
I think it's the application, Nancy, but I apologize because I'm still kind of new at this. It's the part of the packet that starts with the letter from James Coughlin, dated December 22nd, 2020. It's on page six of that packet. Request for special exception, map for lot eighty-seven-six. Facts and circumstances supporting the request.
So what, the application that they submitted for this extension request should just be a photocopy of what was originally approved by the zoning board in, let's see, I have it in here somewhere, on my staff report, February 2nd, 2010, thank you.
Okay.
Because it's not-
That's what I thought. It was, it's basically the original application, just that the extension's tacked onto it.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, if there's anything further, Ms. Priscilla, anything further?
Yes, I would just like to bring to the attention of the board that we have an extension request, and it talks about, I'm sorry, I'm going from memory here. In our zoning code enforcement officer's letter, Nancy writes that there was, they have, where is it? Special exceptions expire after two years from the date of approval if active and substantial development has not been accomplished. So this document was granted, this special exception was granted originally February 2nd, 2010. So if this special exception expires two years from the date of approval, if the active and substantial development has not been accomplished, would it not make sense that this plan would not be active?
That's the reason for the applicant coming in to request the extension. So the original special exception was granted February 2nd, 2010. They came in before that two years was up, January 3rd, 2012 zoning board meeting, and then, and then they granted the extension, the board granted the extension to February 7th, 2012. There was, it was basically a continuation. And then at that meeting of February 7th, they voted to continue to March of 2012. Again, it was, I forget all the details, but it was essentially a continuation of the meeting. And then they had a five-member board, I think, at their April meeting. So April 3rd of 2012, they voted, granted a one-year exception, and then there was a two-year, and then there were mostly two-year extensions granted after that. So as long as they submit their request for an extension of time before that time expires, they're okay. They're meeting that window of getting their request in before the deadline comes around.
Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome.
So when I count this, I count one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine extensions, that this notice just talked about one extension. But in reality, from the beginning of this application to the ZBA, there have been nine extensions of at least one year. And it seems that the abutters have a legal right to finality of a ruling or a situation where, I've been coming to these meetings for ten years, more than ten years, and to have an expectation of finality is something that we expect. And I suspect that there are also abutters who may have called in, who may have some opinions about this property too, some of which have not even, you know, lived here long enough to know the history of it, but yet they're affected by it, and they sure have a legal standing as an abutter and as a neighbor and concerns. So I would respectfully ask that the board deny this extension. And if they don't, at least have a continuation so that this discussion can be continued to next month to address other issues.
Mr. Chairman-
This is Denise. I have a question for Nancy.
Yes.
What year did the planning board approve this plan? Because I would believe that they have to go through the ZBA first prior to going to planning.
When they-
So what year did the planning board approve this project?
Initially?
Mm-hmm.
I don't have that information. I didn't look through the planning board's files.
Maybe the applicant has that.
I can, what's important, oops, thank you. Catherine gave me some minutes from the September 10th, 2009 planning board meeting, and it was final public meeting slash hearing to discuss the final site plan review, application of Placid Woods owner and Woodland Trust applicant for a proposal to build ninety-two townhouse-style condominium units totaling thirteen buildings on the newly created lot eighty-seven-six, et cetera, et cetera. That was continued from the August 13th, 2009 meeting, and let me just flip through the pages here. And, let's see.
So they were at the planning board before they came to the zone?
Let me answer this first question.
Sure.
They talked about non-material changes.
Maybe the applicant has that information.
Bear with me.
The first special exception was initially granted on February 2nd, 2010.
Right, but Denise was asking-
My question is the planning board.
I'm going to guess they went to the planning board after the zoning board, because they would need that special exception first.
That's what I would assume. I'm just curious in what year they got approval, because they couldn't do any building prior to the planning board being approved.
So there was a-
It's curious.
There was a motion. Jim Raymond moved that without making any finding relative to the ZBA's consideration to grant or deny a special exception, that this condominium subdivision/site plan be approved, subject to the following conditions being precedent to final approval and recording, and there were a number of conditions, and that was seconded, and the motion carried.
In what year?
That was September 10th, 2009, but I can't tell you if, thank you, if that original application ever was followed through. I know as far as the zoning board applications for special exceptions, we received several of those as well. The first, the first one being submitted October 4th, 2005, it was a motion to continue. That was continued a couple of times. Ultimately, January 3rd, 2006, the zoning board denied the request for a special exception. They denied the rehearing request by the applicant, and at the same time, a different application was submitted. And so we're forwarding through several iterations of meeting minutes, and there was a new conditional approval that was granted by the zoning board on July 10th, 2007. It had several conditions, and then that was, let's see, there was a rehearing request because of the amount of time that was given to satisfy all of those conditions. It was eighteen months. They came in and asked for another approval with the same conditions. It was a little bit confusing. I would have to dive into the minutes to quite understand the details.
That's fine. I just was curious, and so it was ten years ago.
Yeah, I mean, the-
Thank you.
There was an application that was denied, and then there was, I think, an application that was withdrawn without prejudice, and then there was a new application that was submitted that ended up being approved, and that's the date that you see in my staff report, which is buried in the paperwork, February 2nd, 2010. So they started with ninety-two units, and they're down to seventy-four. Yes.
I was on the planning board when that project was approved.
Of course you were.
And I was the chairman.
Yes.
So, 2010.
Okay. Thank you, Alan.
All right.
So it was a motion in September 2009. Final approval was in two, early 2010.
Okay. Thank you, Alan. Mr. Chairman, it looks like we have several folks on the phone that might want to speak.
Okay. Ms. Priscilla, if you have nothing further, we will go to the folks on the phone.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, I have, we start with last four digits of a phone number being 2309. Are you here to speak about this application? Can you hear me? Phone number ending with 2309. Okay, we'll go on to the next person. We have a phone number ending with 7928. Can you hear me? Okay, let's see. Maybe it's operator error.
We have anything today.
Hold on here. Okay, I'm sorry, who is this speaking now?
Caitlin Space.
Okay. Are you, are you on the phone for the Coughlin Placid Woods application?
Yes, we are. My husband and I are both sitting here listening in.
Could you spell your last name, please?
Yes, S.P.A.C.E.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure I heard it right.
No worries.
Thank you.
And are you in a butter to the project?
Sorry, say that again?
Are you in a butter to this project?
So we live on Pleasant Street, 32 Pleasant Street, to be exact, so we're not far from the location of the site. We bought our house in December of 2019 and are kind of joining in late to finding out all of this and figuring out what's going on. One of our neighbors brought it to our attention recently, and we have lots of concerns because as the previous abutter had talked about, drainage is a major issue in this area. Our basement pretty much floods regularly. Our neighbors flood worse than ours does, and from what I understand, because we weren't here previously, it's only been worse since they repaved this road. I'm worried that if we're adding more buildings and more site work to an area that already has issues with wetlands, what's the effect going to be on the rest of us?
Maybe the applicant could speak on that?
Sure. This is Michael Tierney. The wetland concerns had been thoroughly invested both by the planning board as well as by DES, and we have those permits in place, and those concerns have been addressed previously. This application is for the extension of the special exception approval, and there's no, you know, changes to what this board had previously approved back in 2019.
I understand that. My concern is how many new people have moved to this area that have absolutely no clue that this is happening and have no, have no knowledge to even argue against it because they don't know what's going on. If this has been going on for ten, almost eleven years now, how many residents are actually affected that aren't aware of this? So my background is in architecture. I'm quite familiar with zoning, planning, everything of that sort. I just don't know how many people are fully aware, and when you factor in the amount of people that have probably purchased houses in the last ten years, especially in this area, I'm just concerned that we're extending something that maybe shouldn't be extended any further at this point. If you need to extend it again, there's a lot of concern there.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Alan here, no.
They don't give a shit.
Gail here, I have no questions.
All right, hearing nothing.
Sam here, I have no questions.
Thank you.
There may be some others.
Jason here, I have none.
All right, Ms. State, can you have anything further?
They're just, they don't live near the front door.
Part of you in Goffstown, someone lives in Boston, someone like-
All right.
Folks on the phone, if you can hear me, if you wish to speak, you press star nine on your phone, and that is supposed to indicate to me that you're essentially raising your hand, so forgive me, I'm not exactly sure what that looks like, but I'm going to go with my gut here. I have one- I have one caller with the last four digits of their phone number, 6733. Would you like to speak on, on this application?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
Hey, please identify yourself.
My name is Amanda Turner. I'm here with my husband. And we are in a butter to the property.
Good.
I just, I had, we didn't really know much when we bought our property a couple of years ago about it. We just knew that we kind of, that the project was in the works for trying to be approved. It's what we originally thought. When we bought our property, we have all the woods and the wetlands right behind us and all of the animals. Has there been any kind of research done on how it's going to impact the wildlife back here?
That, um, this is, this is Nancy, I'm zoning code enforcement officer. I, I have not attended the planning board meetings. So I'm, you know, I'm only speaking as a former planner in other communities. So I, I can tell you that those types of, of issues are usually brought up at, at planning board meetings. And as, as, you know, as far as specific resources, you know, floor and fauna, it's, it's not something that I believe the zoning board has discussed as part of the special exception criteria. But if there are some members out there that would like to correct me, I'm.
I'd like you, Nancy.
This is Denise, I would think that's the purview of the planning board, not the zoning board.
Yeah, I would agree with Denise.
Thank you, Denise.
Okay. Is, so does this, this doesn't go back to the planning board, though? It would be the zoning board that's just kind of deciding whether this project is continuing or not at this point?
The, the planning board, the planning board reviewed an extension request that was submitted to them separately relating to their approval of the site plan. And they acted on that last year at their meeting that was held on August 13th of 2020. And they granted a one-year time extension. So that would be up August 13th, give or take a couple of days of this year, 2021.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I just have concerns about how it's going to affect what's going on, like in the wetlands itself and the wildlife. There's so much back there that having, you know, a giant condominium area, or however you want to word it, being placed back there is going to certainly, I feel like, disrupt all of that. I, there's so many things that we have to abide by just because we're right, like right up against the wetland itself, that it just seems, I have concerns that building an entire 74-unit place isn't, isn't going to disrupt that at all. So I guess that's, that's all I really have to say.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else on the phone, Nancy?
Uh, we have, excuse me. We have another caller. It's shown, shown up as anonymous. I'm not sure if they're, my, just one moment, please. My computer's acting funny. I, I'm guessing it may be a caller from a cell phone. I apologize, it, it, there isn't any identifying information. So if there's someone out there that wants to just holler into their phone and let us know that they would like to speak, then I'll know which one you are because you'll light up on my computer.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Okay, hold on just a second. Go ahead, speak, speak again and I can.
Hold that. Oh, sorry, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you just fine.
Okay, great. I'm sorry, I was caller ending 2309, but I didn't know about the star nine, so I apologize for that confusion.
That's okay.
But my name is Rachel, and I'm calling just as a concern of butter and a proud resident of Gofftown.
Please give your, please give your full name for the record.
Sorry, Rachel Lindley, L.I.N.D.L.Y.
Thank you.
And as I mentioned, I'm in a butter as well, as most of the people who have called tonight. I believe that the five criteria for such, for special exceptions should be re-reviewed for this project as it was initially approved over 11 years ago. And as others have mentioned, so much has changed in the area and the neighborhood and in Gofftown. One of the criteria outlined in the zoning ordinance is that the specific site is an appropriate location for such use, being consistent with the Town of Gofftown master plan. However, I looked at the Gofftown master plan, and it specifically mentions large areas of open space have been consumed, thus creating the very rural character, thus threatening the very rural character towns people cherish so highly. To me, just based off of that, this project seems like a direct violation of that mention of, in the Gofftown master plan. Also, the zoning ordinance mentions that the size or the frequency of use will not significantly alter the character of the neighborhood. And that the use will, will not create a nuisance or hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. Just to give some background, my driveway is about maybe 30 feet from where the proposed entrance of this development will be. From my house and yard, over the last two years, I've observed a generally quiet rural road. There's so many pedestrians. It feels like every night, there's people walking their dogs, their kids, and just jogging along the road. But adding a development of this size will significantly impact the character of our neighborhood by destroying the rural character of our road and by adding significant traffic. I know other people have brought it up as well, and that is more of a planning board issue. I do understand that. But I do think it should be considered as it relates to the special exception guidelines. And just lastly, the zoning ordinance mentions that the proposed location is a sufficient size to allow for appropriate sufferers to adjacent properties. As you mentioned, as I mentioned, I own lot 4-66. I'm about 30 feet from where the proposed entrance is going to be. The plans that I've seen online, which I almost wish that the plans were communicated with the butter letter. I know it may not be standard practice, but it is kind of upsetting when you have to dig through the internet to find out this information. And I know that it's available at town hall, but town hall hours are eight to four. And I work an eight to five job, so that is a little difficult. But the plans that I have dug up online will be adding a road right adjacent, adjacent to my property line. I can obviously only speak for my lot and the potential impacts, but this will not allow for an appropriate sufferer. I understand that there's a need for housing in New Hampshire. I'm young, I've gone through the struggle of trying to find an apartment, trying to find affordable places. But I do not think this development suits Gofftown or our neighborhood. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other callers?
Okay, let's see. Uh, is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Can hit, uh, star nine? I have a phone number here ending with 5711. Would you like to speak on this project?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. And, and could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, my name is Yulia Obukhov, O.B.U.K.H.O.V. And I live at 47 West Union Street, which is about, I'd say, 1,000 feet or so from the proposed property. And I just wanted for the record. Sure, Y.U.L.I.A. O.B.U.K.H.O.V. Okay, thank you. For the record, wanted to agree with a lot of other calling, callers calling in about wanting to reconsider the original special permission. Or, you know, an extension at this, well, an extension. I feel like a lot of, a lot of things have changed. I've been in Gofftown for the past 20 years. Over the past two, three years, I've noticed the traffic, foot traffic on my road increased significantly. People walking their dogs, people walking their kids. And I'm not sure that the original proposal considered the foot traffic with no sidewalks on several roads in the area in their plans. That's pretty much all I wanted to add.
Thank you very much.
Let's see. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak about this application? The Placid Woods application? Want to make sure that I am not missing anyone here. Um, let's see. All right, we have a phone number ending with 6952.
Ms. Larson, this is John Cronin. I don't wish to speak in your case.
Oh, hi, John. Okay.
Nancy.
Thank you. I don't, I'm not looking at my cheat sheet, so I apologize. Okay, maybe I should do that. Hold on just one second.
No, no problem.
And there are some names here that I probably don't have. There's another phone number ending in 3027.
This is Mark Pollock. I'm with Dakota. I don't need to speak. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And let's see. We have a caller with the last four digits, 9485. Have we heard from you yet? Are, are you here to speak on, about the Coughlin application?
I'm just observing, but I'm not in a butter. My name is Teresa Reinhardt, but I am opposed
Okay.
to the development.
Can you give your address for the record?
Yes, 24 Westwood Drive.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. And we have a wireless caller, last four digits, 7422. And I apologize, folks, if I've already called on you. 7422, last four digits of your phone number. Would you like to speak?
No.
Okay. Uh, I believe we have captured everybody who's called in, Mr. Chairman, this application.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll take one last thing from Ms. Priscazza, and then Attorney Tierney will have an opportunity to rebut before we close the public hearing. Please come up to the table.
Sorry.
Our neighbors at 6 Lesnick Road, Catherine and John, Kathleen and John Peltonen asked me to relay to this board that they are strongly opposed to this development as well for the reasons that I said earlier. And they strongly would request that the board consider denying this extension. Thank you.
Just their name again?
Peltonen, P.E.L.T.O.N.E.N. John and Kathleen.
Okay, thank you.
All right, hearing, seeing no one else in the audience and hearing no one else on the phone. Attorney Tierney, do you have any final comments before we close the public hearing?
Uh, yes, thank you. So the comments that I heard generally fit into the category of wetlands, wildlife, or traffic concerns. All of these are under the proper purview of the planning board. And the planning board did look and consider these as recently as August of 2020, when the planning board granted a one-year extension. I don't believe we have any evidence that these, you know, concerns are any different than what was previously raised at previous hearings. I don't think there's any changes of a substantial nature that would require this board to deny the extension. I think that the, you know, evidence is the same as it was previously. And the board should grant the six-month extension as requested.
Hi, can you hear me?
Thank you very much.
Yes, Joanne, is that you?
Yes, I just wanted to say something. I was just watching.
Can you, can you, could you say your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, this is Joanne Duffy. I'm the planning director. And I live on Addison Road in Gofftown. I just wanted to clarify a few things for the zoning board. So tonight, the applicant is there to ask for an extension. And that's what the zoning board would be voting on, whether or not to grant that extension. There, there, this isn't a hearing to reopen unless the zoning board did decide to deny the extension. And then, of course, the applicant would have to go back to square one. Some of the reasons for the delays in this project along the way for, from 2010 was due to the economy. Most recently, since, since I've been working there, the, the owner of the project who has the approval had been looking to sell the project. And he now has a buyer, which is Dakota Partnership. And Dakota Partnership, just in October, they were able to get financing from New Hampshire Housing. So when they went back to the planning board in August of 2020, they explained all of this to the board. And they also explained that they were slightly changing the interior design of, of some of the buildings where, rather than having the townhouse style, some of the units would be one-story. And the planning board did agree with that. So I just don't want you to go off on another route here. I just wanted to explain that they're there strictly for the extension. And if that extension occurs, from what I've been told, Dakota Partnership will begin building this project sometime during the month of June of 2021, which then we wouldn't have to worry about any future extensions with the planning board or with the AOT permit.
Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you.
Okay, if we have anything further, Attorney Tierney or anyone, before I close the public hearing. Okay, hearing, hearing nothing. The public hearing is now closed. Board members, what do you have to say? Don't everybody go at once.
Are you ready for a motion?
I'll entertain a motion.
No, Lynn, this is Jason. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
All right. I, I know that I'm not voting on this particular one, so I just want to get my opinions out there and then you guys can go back and forth. But I'm looking at the, you know, the facts and circumstances part here. These facts and circumstances look like they go back to 2009. You know, I, I, I'm looking at the definitions here and knowing this area as well as I do, I think that there's a lot of, a lot of change here. You know, the You know, in terms of the foot traffic that I see in this area a lot, certainly would have nuisance and hazard considerations. You know, the, so I think that's something that we should probably consider, that, you know, the risk of, you know, taking time to act on something means that things change. And I think that the board should probably reconsider the facts and circumstances according to what, what it is now as opposed to what it was in 2009. That's just my opinion.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, to that one, I would just say that the applicant, if I remember correctly, there's going to be a lesser number of units. Is that correct? And I think that would, that would ameliorate the word that I want, the issue of hazard to vehicles and pedestrians and things like that. You know, my thing is that this applicant has been with us for 10, 12 years almost for this application. And as Joanne Duffy said earlier, there were a lot of circumstances that got, that made it wait this long, including the economy, COVID-19, finding a partner to help develop it. And he's, I think he's done his due diligence all these years, and that I think it still meets the criteria that we approved back two years ago, and the zoning ordinance hasn't changed. So I don't think there's a reason or a need to extend, to deny this application at this time.
Hi, this is Denise. I agree with Gail. I remember this coming up two years ago, and I don't believe things have changed, speaking to some of the abutters' concerns. One was about wetlands and the AOT permit's going to be more than protect anybody, any of the abutters. They're not allowed to have more water leave that post-development than they are prior to any work done. It's a state law that people may not know. And getting an AOT permit is not the easiest thing to get. It's time-consuming. So I'm not concerned about that. It's residential. We need residential housing as far as the master plan goes. That's what I have to say.
Okay, more comments?
I'm ready to make a motion. I'll make a motion if you'd like one, Lynn.
Let me make one, let me make my own comments first, Gail, and then I'll be happy to entertain a motion. I just think that Ms. Briscasa had a very good point, that I think that the abutters are entitled to some finality with a project that has been hanging around as long as this. As it was pointed out, this is an extension. This is not a hearing to relitigate the merits of the application. And for most of the, what I'm hearing of the abutters' concerns, I think are more properly the purview of the planning board and the site plan process than anything in the zoning law. We did, we did approve it. I can't find, in my own mind, a reason to disapprove the extension. I would like to see it finally get built after all this. I'd be disinclined to go any further. The whole idea about putting two-year development restrictions on variances and special exceptions is to get the project built, and this now has hung around for more than a decade. So, you know, with that, that's all I have to say. I'm sympathetic, but I do think that, you know, we need to approve the extension and see if it finally gets built this time. I'll entertain that motion now, Gail.
Okay, I am going to make a motion to grant a time extension for a special exception, initially granted on February 2nd, 2010, to allow multifamily housing on a lot in a residential one district.
And how long are you extending it?
I know they asked for six months, but I would like to make it for a year.
I second that, Denise.
Okay. Made by Gail, seconded by Denise. Do we have any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. Did you close the public hearing?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, hearing no discussion, let's go for the roll call. Gail?
Yes.
Alan?
No.
Denise?
Yes.
Sandra?
No.
And I vote yes. We had 3, 32, Nancy.
Yeah, 320.
Yeah.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Get my stuff organized here.
Different pile.
Thank you.
Okay, if everyone is ready, Attorney Cronin, are you prepared to go?
I may have muted him, so hold, hold on. Okay.
I believe we were going, they were going third, correct? We got Tanya Goslin next.
Tanya Goslin was originally second. What's the, what's the board's pleasure?
Well, personally, I think if I was second, I wouldn't want to be put third. And Attorney Coughlin asked to be put later in the evening.
Mr. Chairman, I have no issue with that. Certainly, I appreciate the leave that you gave me to finish up. So if the other case wants to go forward, I can wait and go when you're ready.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Tanya Goslin, are you on the phone and prepared to go?
I don't see her phone number.
We no longer have Tanya Goslin on the phone.
She's not here. Should we continue until the next meeting?
I'll entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion. Absent the presence of the applicant or address for application, we'll continue this till the meeting of March.
All right, very good. Let me go down the roll. Actually, do we have a second to that?
Can I just, this is Denise. Can we just add if she comes on during this meeting, we could hear her last, just in case she stepped away for one minute? If we could do that.
All right, let's, let's wait and see if she comes back online before the end of the meeting.
Okay.
All right. With that, we'll go to the Hemley Investments one. Let me read the notice, and then if you're ready to go, Mr. Cronin.
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Going to the application. Yes, yes, Alan.
Yes, before we go back to this last case, on the, on the, the one up at the, at the Mountain Road, I'd like to request that the applicant at least provide a survey site plan so we can actually tell what the setbacks were and what's being proposed.
This is Denise. I think it's a good idea.
With, now, with application, are we referring to, Alan?
Tanya Goslin, 16 incline. Ms. Goslin indicated she was able to find all four of her boundary monuments, but certainly if the board wishes to require a survey, then I'll reach out to her tomorrow if she, if she doesn't appear this evening. And that will hopefully give her time to have it produced for the, I think it's the March 2nd meeting. I'll have to grab my phone.
I believe it is March.
It is March 2nd. I checked.
Yeah, okay, March 2nd, okay.
March 2nd.
All right. With that bit of business done, are we ready to get started on the next one, folks?
This is Denise. I need to recuse myself from this case, please.
All right. I'm going to have Jason vote on this.
Yeah, you'd have to appoint Jason to sit for this application.
Okay. Jason, if you are online, I'm going to appoint you a voting member for this application because Denise is recusing.
Acknowledged.
Thank you. All right, let's get, let's get going, folks. This is on the application of Hemley Investments LLC. Owner applicants are seeking two variance requests. The first request is to allow a proposed multifamily use in the commercial industrial flex zone. The second request is to permit 30-unit condominium development that will have four buildings with less than one-half the building length to the side setbacks. This concerns Section 3.11A3 and Section 4.4.1.3 of the Goffstown zoning ordinance. The properties are located at 134 Mast Road, Map 5, lots 54 and 54-1, zoned commercial industrial flex. This has been continued from December 1 and January 5 ZBA meetings. Mr. Cronin, would you please present your case?
Can I make a motion to find the institution has no regional impact?
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Okay.
Thank you, Gail. All right, let's go down the roll, let's go down the roll on regional impact. Gail?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Denise, oops, Jason?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yeah.
And I vote yes, 5-0. And with that out of the way, Mr. Cronin, the floor is yours.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is John Cronin. My privilege to represent the applicant here this evening. I know this case has been pending in a cycle for a bit, but we're happy to have the opportunity to present it this evening. The project that we're proposing here that was called out on the notice is a 30-unit townhouse project. There are six buildings located on two tax maps that effectively lived as a single lot, but they are separate. One would be Map 5, Lot 54, and the other is Map 5, Lot 54-1. The separate parcel is a small sliver that sits between Mast Road and the rail trail. The sizable parcel sits at the back. Many years ago, this site was approved for a courthouse that the state elected not to go forward with that, and it's been idle since that time. The request for relief that we're seeking are to allow the use as proposed, as well as some setback relief. Though all of you are probably familiar with this parcel from your daily travels, but just to acquaint you a little bit with the locus and some of the surrounding issues that may be facts you want to consider relative to the setback variances. If you look at the north from the site, which is actually a little acclimated to the compass and the plan, but north would be out at Mast Road, you see the smaller segment of 54-1, and then the dash lines being the rail trail. The development is set up, as you see, with a driveway, which is the historical driveway that's currently in use to serve the single-family home. It's important to note that that lane will not be for all unrestricted traffic. It will really be for right turn in and right turn out. The principal use here, the principal access, will be through the adjacent cul-de-sac off of Tetra Drive and through the neighboring Langley property. We recognize that the ordinance is, allows mixed use with the residential and other uses in this particular zone. We've also had occasion to review the master plan and make note of the mission of the master plan to move forward with the different types of diversified housing stock. Looking at the numbers of the master plan, with the total number of housing units in the community being up in the 4,000s, a small percentage of those would be what would be considered townhouses. It's roughly 2%, 2-point-something percent, according to the numbers in the master plan. The master plan does call out the need for smaller housing, more affordable housing, and they specifically reference the need for townhouses. I was somewhat surprised, as someone that's been doing this since the mid-'80s, to look at the statistics in the master plan with respect to building permits for new housing. Surprised, frankly, to see the numbers in the last 10 years being approximately 275 units. And the bulk of development in the town was done in the '80 to '89 period with something like 14, 1378 units and 275 of recent. So it looked like the big building boom was in 1980 to 1989, 1990 to 1991. We had 671 units. 2000 to 2009, 637. I would bet that most of those were in the early part of the decade before we dipped into our recession. This particular housing is in demand. It can be brought to the market at an affordable price, target prices around the 300 range, where young people that are just getting out of college and starting their job or others looking for reasonably priced housing at today's interest rates can get into a new, well-built, new construction for probably less than what they could rent a townhouse for and have equity ownership. When you look at the, again, the locus, if you look at it towards, towards the west, that parcel which provides access, and we're not suggesting this site is mixed use because it's clearly two different lots and two different owners, but it functions consistent with the spirit and intent of the mixed use, as you do have the office building that's currently situated on the site, and that will provide access and continuity in the principal access into the townhouses, and it will look and feel like a mixed-use development. If you also look at the plan, you will see that along that boundary, the western boundary, the topography and the wetlands there suggest that it's probably not suitable for future development. You see that there's a veterinarian shop that's proposed there, and of course, the gas station is out at the Apex at Tetra Drive. When I get to the five criteria, I'll talk a little bit about the purpose and intent of the setbacks and how despite the measure of these being a little bit less than what the ordinance requires, as correctly detailed by Ms. Larson in her report, effectively you're going to provide much more than the half-length of the building in this particular space because there'll be no development that will cause any crowding or aesthetic problems. Looking over on the other side of the property to the east, you have power lines. It's a large tract of land, but it's burdened at the boundary by a triple track of high-power lines. The likelihood of development being anywhere within the 30, 50, 100 feet distance of that lot is very unlikely. When we talk a little bit, too, about commercial use and some of the allowed uses that would be allowed by the ordinance by right in the commercial sense, certainly those types of uses prefer frontage along Mast Road and probably would prefer access that way. Though I can't speak to it directly, I'm not so certain that the, the office building would be as amenable to this type of traffic as they would for commercial traffic and trucks. So essentially, you get yourself 30 housing units at a price point that's very much in demand. Looking at the housing stock, again, in Goffstown, it looks like 2.8. Looking at the housing stock, again, in Goffstown, it looks like 2.8 percent would be what you could characterize as townhouses, and the great majority of housing is single-family housing, presumably most of it being built, shouldn't say most of it, but a large percentage of it being built in traditional subdivisions in the 1980s. When you look at this site, I did note on the zoning report a question about density with 15 units per acre being 4.88 acres, which is less than half the density if every single space of it was buildable. We acknowledge that that particular number is a requirement, and if we get to planning after all the full engineering is done and we don't meet that criteria, we'd recognize we would have to come back. But based on the prior development of the courthouse, even though that work could be dated and will have to be updated for the planning board, we're very confident that this density is much less than what could be achieved if you really wanted to max the development out. When you look at the criteria, notice the variance criteria, as you folks know better than everyone doing this monthly or several times a month, looking at the standards being relaxed over the past several years through our Supreme Court, and the simplex test really applied a reasonable standard away from the effectively used as consistent with the ordinance standard, which predated simplex. When you look at the ordinance, the spirit and intent of the ordinance, when you look at it, certainly it's clear that this particular zone was intending to have a mixed-use component with a mix of commercial and residential, although this doesn't provide it on the same lot, it does provide it in the spirit and the intent of the ordinance. I would also say that the current ordinance, when it's tempered with the most recent master plan, which is just updated, this is exactly the kind of flexible diversified development that the master plan was calling for, either to attract downsizers, to get them in a location that's convenient to services, to shopping, to downtown, and not so remote in a rural area. Likewise, those younger folks and people working in service jobs in the community would have a place to live that's convenient, reducing traffic trips and impact to the environment. Under Farrar versus Keen, they talk about the spirit and intent and the public interest being the same. Certainly, there is not only a townwide need, the statewide need to develop housing exactly like this. And if you also look at with the public interest element here, this is certainly much more compatible with the rail trail, which I know the town has done a lot of work on, and not only the town, but residents and everyone else. And this is a much better and more compatible use with the rail trail than any of the commercial uses that may be proposed. In terms of the balancing test, when we look at the elements that are dictated by the courts, what would the harm be to the public if this was granted versus the harm to the applicant if it's denied? Certainly, the property owner here has made a number of efforts to reasonably develop this property. This is in keeping in line, of course, with the overall goals of the ordinance, the state economic and planning departments, and the need to get housing in this price range. I do note that we represented surround development down the road. Their project is a little bit different, but it was well-received by the community. It will be getting built out soon, and that's approximately a mile or maybe even less down the road, and similar variances were granted to allow that to go forward. We don't see any benefit to the public if this were denied. Certainly, there'd be a hardship to the applicant if it were, and it would really minimize the practical uses of the property. As far as the hardship prong, and you look at that, the special conditions of the property and its environment, that's really the precursor to the reasonable test. Is this use reasonable? When you look at it, the impairment of the existing driveway, its impact on the rail trail would give you enough on the special conditions to justify the hardship criteria, leaving the question, is this type of use reasonable for this parcel? We submit that all of the evidence offered in connection with this project demonstrate that it is a good use for the property and will be good for the community and good for the neighbors. Finally, in terms of the value prong, when you have power lines on one side, gasoline station, proposed veterinary facility, and an office building that's willing to support the access, I think it's self-evident that there'd be no negative impact to the surrounding properties. That concludes our presentation. I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you may have and do my best to answer them thoroughly.
Thank you. Any questions from board members?
I have some questions and maybe some issues for discussion.
Is that, Sandra, is that you?
No, it's Gail.
Oh, sorry. Your voice was distorted. Okay, go ahead, Gail.
Okay. What I wanted to bring up tonight was the comment of the planning board. I don't know if it's, they reviewed this application and they had, actually, they had a pretty lengthy discussion on it, and they have asked that the zoning board, that the zoning board consider the planning department or planning board's goals in the master plan when it considers this variance request. The new master plan has been adopted, and they don't think that this, or one of the members of the planning board said she didn't think that this variance meets those planning board goals with the new master plan. It was also said, and this is where I guess if we have to address it, or if it has to be addressed, we should do it sooner rather than later. David Pierce had said that the zoning board is asked to look at a plan that was written in 2009, and our plan that we have in our package reflects July 9, 2009. It doesn't show in a butters parcel on this plan, which is Map 19 Lot 47 dash 6, which is the Goffstown rail trail that belongs to Park and Rec. And the applicant actually says in there that they would grant an easement to the town, but the town owns the property, so there's no way for them to grant an easement to the town. And David went on to say that, to tell the zoning board that there are inaccurate portrayals of ownership of the land, especially specifically that lot that I just said. And it divides the applicant's property into two tracks, and this isn't shown on the documents that we have. And another one said, well, our decision and our role, from the planning board, we plan for certain areas in our town for development, and this doesn't meet that plan. And I think that's referencing the fact that it's all residential instead of a mix. You know, the attorney Cronin said that it was, it doesn't actually meet the CIFZ description as far as having the mixed use, but he said it meets it in the spirit and intent of the ordinance, and I'm not quite sure what that means or how it qualifies for that, being all residential. But those are some of my concerns just right out of the starting date.
Hey, so I wanted to get some clarification on that too, if I could. And I wanted to reference the paragraph I brought up before. So it says on page 6 of the packet, which is listed on the bottom, is page 12 of 17, the third paragraph on the bottom.
Which packet are you looking about, Jason?
It's the staff review.
Is that the planning board minutes page you're looking at, Jason? 12 of 17?
Exactly. Yeah, the bottom of that page, it says page 12 of 17, and then it circled 6.
Yep, that's.
All right, so the third paragraph from the bottom says that, to paraphrase, we now have the adoption of the new master plan. But the master plan that I was able to find was from 2006, so.
Well, I have, it was just recently voted on for being approved by the planning board, so it hasn't been distributed yet, but it is there. It's an entirely different format too, but it is there.
So it's on your website?
Yeah, it is on the website.
Okay, I'm looking at it right now. And I've got below is the online copy of the master plan 2006.
No, this one was from just this past year.
So I guess, and this kind of goes back to what I was saying before, so there is a newer master plan.
There is. And what it says in its housing strategy is one of the, excuse me, one of the bullet points is that it says to, wait a minute, I just lost it, continue to promote mixed-use development in the towns RSBO-1, RSBO-2, commercial, CIFZ, and VC districts, those commercial districts. And by making, allowing this, if this were to go forward as all residential, it certainly would not be in conjunction, it would not be in agreement with the master plan that they just, that they disapprove.
Okay.
Should I get a response, Mr. Chair, or should I wait till the end?
Please wait until the end, sir.
Okay.
Any other board members? I'd like to make a comment on my own. I see that the applicant's application in several places makes reference to effectively creating a mixed-use development, a de facto mixed-use development. But if you look at the zoning ordinance, I refer to 5 dot 9 dot 1, that in the commercial, CIFZ, and VC districts, multifamily units are allowed upper floors of a mixed occupancy building, and multifamily units, ground floor of a mixed occupancy building when the planning board makes various findings. The fact that what the applicant is proposing is strictly residential and sweeping in an existing commercial development to say that that constitutes a mixed-use project, I don't think it fits the definition for me. Anyone else? Okay, any other board, any other board member questions at this point? Okay, Attorney Cronin, do you wish to respond to anything you've heard?
Sure, Mr. Chair. First off, if it was a mixed-use development like was proposed in the ordinance, we wouldn't be here. There'd be no need for a variance, maybe for the setbacks, but not for the use. And when you look, when you look at this particular project, as you do any variance application, the reason they're here is they don't comply with the ordinance. So looking at the ordinance and say it doesn't fit it, and I don't think this is a good idea, isn't how the variance process works. It's supposed to analyze based on the five criteria. The section with respect to the rail trail, when you look at it as far as ownership, our office has done a significant amount of legal work on this and other properties that were once burdened by a railroad line, and I recognize that reasonable minds can differ with respect to title review and title opinions. I don't know what Ms. LeBrecq's legal knowledge and whether she's actually done the title or done the research, or if she's relying on comment from others about ownership. In my view, it's immaterial, because whether that rail trail exists as a fee simple owned piece of parcel by the town or is there by easement, it doesn't change the effect of land use as being proposed. So to get caught up on the status of the rail trail, whether it's a fee or whether it's an easement, the application says the applicant is willing to grant an easement to the extent that's necessary, so the rail trail isn't disturbed. I don't have any issue if you want to condition it on clarification or resolution of the title issue, because I don't think it matters much to us what the ownership is. But if you look at the title, you follow the New Hampshire Title Standards, and you follow all the railway takings throughout the state, I think you'll come to the same conclusion that our title people did, that this parcel is owned in fee simple by the owner of this property. Again, that's not really why we're here. We don't think it's relevant. Think that if you analyze the proposed use under the variance criteria, it meets each and every one of them. I know I didn't talk a lot about setbacks, but the shortage is the minimus, and when you look at the spacing based on the natural configurations of the power lines, there's really no basis to say that what we're proposing is unreasonable. So I think we can all agree that this doesn't meet the strict letter of the zoning ordinance, and if we did, we probably wouldn't be here. So I'd ask you to review it under the criteria of the zoning ordinance, and if for some reason you choose to deny this based on title, I'd like to you to make a specific finding of fact and law as to why that is, so that we have a clear record to address it. So I appreciate the comments. I understand, as I said, why reasonable minds could differ, but the title history and the title status of the rail trail, we don't think is germane to what we're asking for tonight.
Nancy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Attorney Cronin, this is Nancy Larson. I just want to, well, a question and a statement. Along the eastern side property boundary, you have those two buildings with four units apiece, and all of the buildings, including those, those two buildings, appear to have raised decks attached to the rear. I just wanted to point out that those decks also are required to comply with the minimum setback. So I'm not sure if that is going to have any kind of impact on your request, and as I said in my staff report, I'm, my measurements are based on a, you know, an 11-by-17 plan. So my numbers in my staff report for the proposed relief are in approximation, and if, if, when we receive full-size plans, if, if the, if relief is granted by the zoning board, but the full-size plans show that those, those decks attached to the rear of the buildings are closer to the property boundary than, than what the, what the zoning board has granted for relief, then that would require coming back to the zoning board or turning them into patios instead of raised decks. Did you hear everything I said, Attorney Cronin?
I did not. I think I got cut off for a little bit. I dialed back in.
Oh, okay.
So.
Okay, well, let me repeat myself.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's okay. The two buildings along the eastern property boundary, they have four units apiece. Those buildings, as well as all the other buildings in, shown on this conceptual site plan, appear to have raised decks attached to the rear of the buildings. Is that correct?
That's what it looks like on the plan. I'll verify here through text.
Okay. So my point is that those decks also need to meet the minimum setback requirement, which is, you know, based on the formula in the, in the zoning ordinance for multifamily. So I don't know if the site plan will have to be modified, or if those raised decks for the, for those two, two buildings, so eight units total, would have to either change into patios, at-grade patios, or if, if the site plan would need to be modified in order to make sure that those decks comply with. that those decks comply with whatever relief is granted by the zoning board this evening, if they do indeed, uh, grant, um, the variances.
Yeah, I'm, uh, I'm told that they were taken into consideration, and they do comply.
Okay.
We recognize the risk, if we got to planning, that we, you know, we have to comply.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions from board members?
Yes, this is Alan.
Go ahead, Alan.
I have two problems. One is, I'm looking at a plan that's 10 years old, and I'm also looking at a concept that includes the Abutter's property, and I, I find the proposed access road not feasible. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I will, I will just make my personal observation on the thing. I have a bit of difficulty in seeing how this project meets the hardship criteria. There's a lot in there that suggests it's a very appropriate site for residential development, but it also doesn't say why it would not be appropriate for a development fitting what is specified in the CIFZ, which is residential units in the same building, or for that matter, for a usage of the property that would be in line with the CIFZ. Obviously, the Langley Companies in the next lot have made, uh, various low-intensity commercial development on the same type of lot. I don't, um, I am having great difficulty seeing the hardship that is posed to the applicant in this case. Other board members?
Yeah, uh, Len, you brought up the Langley property, and wasn't that all constructed before we came up with that, or before the planning board instituted the CIFZ zone?
I am not sure what the history of how long the CIFZ is, that's, that's been a commercial, at least the gas station's been there a very long time, 20 years plus, I believe. The rest, I'm not sure about the age of the CIFZ. But in terms of maintaining viable commercial property along one of the few potential commercial corridors that we have, I'm not sure a completely residential development is appropriate there. Was that you, Alan, who, who was speaking?
No, that was Jason.
Jason, is that you, go ahead.
That's me. So, Len, that, and I did find the updated master plan, which is in a very strange spot, but, um, I, I did read through it, and, and based on what I'm seeing here, that, I agree with you. I think that's the problem that I'm having, is that if it's all residential in an area that is kind of looking for, for mixed business use, especially on, on a made drag, that, that would be, I think, adverse to the master plan.
I agree with you, Jason.
And I, I, looking, looking at it also, including the Abutter's property as part of your proposal, I'm having trouble with also. Anyone else?
Um, Alan here.
Go ahead, Alan.
I have a, a, a problem with vehicular access to, from the, from the road to this site. There's an in and out, um, I'll call it eastbound, and you, you, to get to this project, you have to go through the, uh, development, the Langley development, and I don't think that's proper, I think the access to this site is, uh, misconfigured.
Is that, is that a pri- Question for Nancy, is that a private road there, or is that a dedicated town road, Tetro Drive?
Uh, Tetro, well, Denise actually could answer the question.
I would love to.
If, uh, if the chair would not mind.
We'll grant the Abutter leave to speak, thank you. Go ahead, go ahead Denise.
Denise Langley, I'm the Abutter. That access road was put in, um, it was demanded by the town, because it was part of their master plan, and, um, that was back in, I think, 2009, when we went through the approvals. Um, as far as CIFZ, that, when we purchased that property, it was CIFZ.
And what year was that?
I'm just trying to answer some of the questions that people had, that I know the answers to in that case. As far as the rail trail, I don't know who owns the rail trail in front of this property, but I know that on all the property that I purchased, I did own the rail trail, and the difference is, I don't, when you own the rail trail, there's a 20-foot or 25-foot easement, but there are no setbacks from the rail trail.
Denise's-
When you don't own the, the trail and the, and the town does, then you have to have setbacks, which definitely affect this piece of property for commercial development.
Is, is Tetro Drive, uh, public or private, up to the cul-de-sac?
Tetro Drive is a public road to the cul-de-sac.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Nancy.
Since, since Alan brought it up, I just want to make it very clear, and I'm, I'm certain that, uh, Attorney Cronin understands this, um, the, the site plan, the conceptual site plan that, that was submitted to us, does include, uh, conceptual layout of the property next door, but, um, in, in no way does that assume that, um, that the, the layout, specifically that proposed access road from, uh, the Abutter's, um, property to the west, is included as part of this application. That is something that would have to go through the planning board process. The owner of, of that, uh, property, Stephen J. and Denise B. Langley, they would have to, um, be, uh, co-applicants, um, because they own the property where that proposed access road is shown, and, um, so, this is, this is simply a, uh, request for variances needed for relief from the minimum required setbacks for multifamily, um, developments, and a, um, variance request for the use to allow straight multifamily in the CIFZ district.
And I would think the request for multifamily in CIFZ has to be the threshold issue before we consider any question of setbacks.
Yes, if you, if, if you want to, um, talk about, um, taking them up individually, then it would make sense to take up the use, um, before moving on to, um, before doing, instead of doing the, the setback discussion first, because we could end up, um, having a lengthy discussion for no reason if the board feels, uh, that they don't, um, wish to grant the, um, the variance for the use. Not suggesting that's the direction the board would go in, but that's usually how, how we recommend, uh, the order be taken.
I, I would consider, and let me ask the sense of the board on this, that it would be wise to consider the use component of this first before we get into a discussion of setbacks. Any objections to that, to proceeding in that direct way?
Alan here, no.
Dale here, no. Sandra here, no.
And I say no too.
All right, so let's, let's proceed on that basis, uh, that we need to establish the use first, and then consider the setbacks if the use is granted. Is there any further discussion on, uh, that point? Actually, let me, we are, we are still in the open public hearing, um, Nancy, do we have anyone on the phone?
Uh, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Hi, yes, I'm sorry, I have raised my hand, this is Denise.
All right.
Okay, I would just like to speak on the usage, um, anybody who knows me knows how protective I am of commercial industrial land in the town of Gostown, and I knew that down the road was going to come back and bite this board, but I'll tell you the difference. Difference is the rail trail, having to, that rail trail in the front of a piece of commercial property, then with setbacks, a commercial, um, building is not going to want to be there, they're not going to be visible at all, it's not a really wide lot, unlike the one down the road, where you have some visibility. Um, the rail trail hurts us, I know that the planning board made a lot of comments about the rail trail, but in this case, it hurt commercial property, and the rest of the, that chunk of land that was all zoned CIFZ is all commercial, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you Denise. Nancy?
Mr. Chairman, uh, there is still, um, uh, one of the Abutters to the Coughlin application on the line, um, and I apologize, I'm searching for your name, um, last four digits of the phone number, 5711, is there, uh, something you wish to, um, say regarding this application? I believe, I, I will not pronounce this correctly, but, uh, Yila Abuku, 5711, are you on the phone? Okay, apparently she's not on the phone.
She did make, she did make comment on the application.
She did, and she's still on here, so, um, but-
Has disconnected?
Apparently not. And then Attorney, uh, Cronin, your last four digits are 6952, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, with that, if we have no one on the phone, and obviously no members of the public here in the room, I'm, uh, going-
Hey, Len?
Yep, go ahead Jason.
Sorry, that, this, Jason, I just wanted to clarify one other thing, just because Alan has me thinking about access roads, um, and this, I'll ask the Abutter, because she probably knows better, uh, the cul-de-sac, is this the part in front of your, of that construction building, or is it over by the medical, uh, building?
It's right in front of the, of my building. That's where Tetro Drive ends, is at that cul-de-sac.
Oh, okay. Hmm, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, if there's nothing further, I am going to close the public hearing, and let's enter into deliberation. All right, public hearing is closed. What does anybody have to say? Don't all talk at once.
I guess, from, from my perspective, and what I'm trying to balance is, is the CIFZ zone discussion versus Denise's comment about being able to actually have construction want to, I'm sorry, uh, commercial want to build there. Um, I mean, I know in my travels, I've seen plenty of, of towns like ours where the commercial area has a setback, you know, from a much wider space in front, that don't seem to have any problems, um, I don't know, that's what's in my, my mind right now.
What's, what's on in my mind is that we have, um, the town of Gostown has little, um, commercial and industrial space left, and, um, you know, we did approve an application just down the road a little bit, which the applicant, uh, addressed or brought up, and that was an entirely different matter, um, and, uh, an entirely different lot, they may be in somewhat close proximity to each other, but that doesn't mean that it's a given that we would approve this one. And my concern is that we need to promote the mixed-use development in, in town, and we would have to do that by ensuring that in the CIFZ zone, that it's not all residential. And I think if, if we allow it to, if we were to say yes to it being all residential, I think, uh, it, it would not be in the public, public interest, or the spirit of the ordinance would be observed.
And I, I would concur with Gail on that, I think that's, in addition to not meeting what I would consider the hardship criteria, it just, it doesn't, it doesn't fit, there's not even, there hasn't even been an attempt to integrate any kind of CIFZ, and again, the ordinance is very specific on what it's asking for, for residential or multifamily residential in, uh, that particular zone.
I think that, that helps me a lot, guys, thank you.
Okay, do we have any further discussion, or would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, go ahead, Gail.
I'm going to make a motion to deny the variance request to allow a proposed multifamily use in the commercial industrial flex zone, uh, finding that it does not, uh, that it is contrary to the public interest, and that the spirit of the ordinance is not observed, and as Len had said, uh, the hardship issue that he doesn't feel is there.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Jason, do we have any further discussion? Going once, going twice, okay, let's call a roll. Gail?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
Jason?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. Five zero, the, um-
Zero five, oh yeah, five zero. Five zero. Does that make the other variance request move?
I, I would say so.
Yeah, I think there should, should be a, a statement to that effect.
Okay, oh, we can add in the fact that, uh, given that the, given the denial of the first request to allow proposed multifamily use, the second request to per, to permit the, um, uh, buildings with less than the half building length as side setbacks is a moot point.
Thank you, Gail.
Thank you, Gail. All right.
Chair, could I raise a point of order, a point of order? No. Okay, thank you.
That was, that wasn't me. That was, that wasn't me. Could you repeat? That was Attorney Cronin. And the public hearing has been closed, and the board has taken its vote.
I understand that a point of order on procedure doesn't relate to closing the public hearing. The applicant came for a decision on the setbacks, so we have a complete record, and we don't have to do this in multiple places. I'd ask that you consider them and vote on them independently. Thank you.
All right, I don't have a, I don't have a problem with that vote. If anybody on the board objects, please let me know.
I guess I'd like to understand why, why we continue on with the setbacks when the use has been denied.
I can respond to that, if you want.
Go ahead, Mr. Cronin.
Because, you know, my job is to protect the record and to protect the applicant. Listening to the hearing tonight, I think it's pretty clear to me that the ZBA heard in their determination and interpretation of the hardship standard. They also violated the law by saying you can't have a variance because that's not what the zone contemplated. I would suspect when we take this, if the client wants to, say, let's go to the Housing Appeals Board and raise these issues, and let's raise them all. May not win, but I don't want to go up there and raise the use issue, and then say you have to come back and go through the setbacks again. I'd just as soon do them all at once, and we'll have a nice, clean record, and whoever reviews this can review it altogether. Thank you.
Nancy, you got a comment?
I could use your counsel, Nancy, if you're-
Well, I'm not an attorney, that's the first thing I'll say. Secondly, with all due respect to Attorney Cronin, I'm not sure it's the board's job to make sure that his record is complete with respect to a discussion, deliberation, and motion, and a final vote on a request for variance from the setback requirements when that request becomes a moot point. It seems like it's not a good use of the board's time to discuss an item that is for a use that has just been turned down. So I, my recommendation would be to not move forward with a discussion on the variance request. And this is consistent with the board's past practices, when we have dual requests like this, when one relies upon the other. And at least for the sake of consistency, I would say, you know, let's continue to do that practice.
And I would concur with Nancy's suggestion there, because I think it is not, it is pointless for the board to consider separate decisions on a point that has been rendered moot. The use variance was the threshold issue here, and I don't see a point in the board considering it further.
I agree.
I agree. Alan here.
All right, thank you for the, thank you for the sense of the board. All right, with that, I'm going to see Nancy, do we have the third applicant? I've lost my sheet of paper here.
Tonya Gosselin?
Tonya Gosselin.
Tonya Gosselin, is she online?
I don't see her phone number here. Ms. Gosselin, are you on the phone? Does not appear that she is.
All right, Gail, you want to repeat your motion from before to postpone Ms. Gosselin's application to the next meeting?
Um, yes, so we, because of the applicant's absence from the meeting, we're going to continue this application to March 2nd.
Without prejudice?
Without prejudice, yes. Thank you, Alan.
And requires a site survey?
Yes. I'll contact her.
I'll make that part of the motion.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
A full boundary survey? That's what you're referring to, correct?
A boundary survey that locates the building on the property.
Correct.
Because having been up to the site, their front porch is awful close to the road.
Do you want essentially just an existing conditions plan, or do you also want the surveyor to add the proposed addition?
Well, the proposed addition is, we'll know from the setbacks that come in from the building.
Yep. I just wanted to be sure.
It's in the back, it's, the deck is already built.
Yes. I noticed that.
All right, with, can-
Need a second?
Yeah, we do need a second.
I'll second. Okay, give it to Sandra.
Okay, if we're ready for a vote. Gail?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Denise, you're back on for this.
Yeah, yeah.
Sandra?
Yeah.
And I vote yes, five zero. All right, I see no.
I have one little thing.
Yes, Nancy?
So everyone out there, as you know, the March 2nd zoning board meeting will be our first fully remote meeting. And I know Jason, you, or Alan, you have Microsoft Teams, that's the platform that the town will be using. So if any of you don't have that on your computer, just shoot me an email, and IT, either I'll reach out to you, or IT will, I'm not sure, but someone will reach out to you, and then they'll, you know, they'll get you all set up with a platform, so we'll be ready to go for the March 2nd meeting. That's all I have.
And everybody should save, everybody should save their packets from Tonya Gosselin's application.
Yes, thank you, Gail.
Thank you for the reminder, Gail. All right, if there's nothing further, a motion to adjourn, please?
I motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, we need, yeah, we need to do a roll call again, don't we? Gail?
Yeah.
Alan?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. It was-